Fish in over the weather.
Oh, okay.
Very good.
Got it. It is seven oh two. We'll call the meeting to order. Um, first and foremost, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to privilege of the floor if anyone would like to speak. Um, on anything that is, we don't have any. Yes, outside of public hearing. So if it's specifically to the eighteen East Miller and you want to speak at the public hearing, otherwise we're open for privilege.
It's it is.
Yep, yep, fine.
Um, this actually does, it's a question to the board. I was here previously. And Greg and I have been talking and trying to figure out because there's zoning in place that doesn't allow business unless it's on a corner. And um, the two kind of thoughts is either putting like a very short road in that leads to a commercial driveway uh, or rezoning type property.
Can you just remind them like which property you're talking about?
Sorry, uh, nineteen fourteen Danby Road just past the corner of Michigan Hall. Um, I don't know if either of those are preferred or a problem, but that is kind of the next step I'm going towards before coming back in.
Um, do you have a map?
So just a, yeah, just a refresher.
Like what it would be zone to.
Um, oh, I don't have a, I have to pull the zoning map, but um, so Zach had come to the planning board um, a few months ago. And what I'll do, I'll just zoom in just in an aerial. Um, so we're all right here. And Zach's property is just south and ninety six B. Up in this lot, he has built this house right here. It's zone Hamlet neighborhood and it's right on the edge of the Hamlet neighborhood. And so uh, restaurant use um, and a few other uses are only allowed on corner lot. So that was kind of a big hang up when he came to the board a few months ago during the sketch plan review was he would have to build a road and he's been exploring that and talking with DOT about pulling a road in. Um, but there are some other paths that he could also take and one of them is to request a rezoning. Or having the town do a major sort of zoning amendment, um, which has been talked about in some town board meetings for allowing these uses, restaurant, um, a few other uses, I think religious institution to allow them just on say ninety six B or thirty four ninety six down in West Danby, um, rather than a corner. So there's really kind of three paths forward, I think, just to pair as you define.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to get the zone changed. That sounds almost like favoritism on this point because I'm the only person trying to do something. I know it will be beneficial to other people in the future, but the other two ways, I mean, when you hear back on like the concerns of the tax structure change because it would then would potentially be paying higher taxes on our house to commercial standards too, but it's a previously commercial zone law. So.
Right, so Leslie actually pointed this out. So this property used to be part of a planned development zone. Um, and then it got rezoned to a commercial commercially zone property. There's not many commercially zone properties in Danby, like purely commercial. Um, and then with the new zoning in twenty twenty one, it just got the slate was wiped clean and became part of the Hamlet neighborhood. So Wesley brought that to my attention, I think after a planning board meeting a couple of months ago, or even last month. And you know, I actually think it could be a decent candidate for a rezoning. Um, if if the town doesn't want to amend the entire Hamlet neighborhood zoning to allow these uses in another, right, in other places other than just the, in just the uh, corners or requiring Zach to build a road.
I was kind of looking at the corner lots. There aren't that many that are unoccupied, right? So if we wanted to imagine a hamlet that had restaurants and other related uses like churches, um, there wouldn't be, there's only like three maybe lots that I could count that were unoccupied by houses that could even be used. So it seems to me like that's at least.
I mean, I was in favor of the direction of rezoning that corridor to like probably to the extent of the Hamlet neighborhood. Like I think beyond that, it does become more spaced out and more residential, like once you start getting further out, houses are larger properties in further apart. Um, I would also support just rezoning that property if it um, and then maybe if we end up coming to a point where, you know, if it takes a longer process and it takes more feedback from both the town board and our board to get to the point of rezoning the corridor, if that's the direction we want to go, then I would be in favor of rezoning that lot. I think it would be more problematic building the road. Like it's more, it's
expensive.
Well, it's not only that, but like, what's the point? Like it goes to nowhere.
Yeah, they're gonna drive down.
Not gonna help the community in any way, shape or form. Like it's not benefiting the community.
Yeah.
It's just tearing up more land.
Yeah, you would build the road and name it the road to nowhere.
Yeah, and then like it would, you know, then it'd be the debate of it's a private road or if Danby's maintaining it and like it's a whole ripple effect.
Right, I I'm also in favor of the zoning because I think if we're thinking out further and further to what we'd like to see happen to Danby and the Danby, the properties and the stuff around here and have some more things. You're so close to the Hamlet and it's, it makes sense to allow something like, I think, to go that direction.
And it's gonna be a slow process of getting properties available that if we open up a little bit more area, it'd be more likely that properties become available, that people would then be able to insert these kind of amenities.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, to more things along.
Yeah.
Where we would like to see things developed. So I, yeah, I think it makes sense to just do that.
Well, and just, and I see Joel has his hand up, but I just want to say that um, in talking about this with Zach, um, I realized that there's either rezoning just his property, or you know, um, versus going through a process of rezoning the Hamlet neighborhood. One is really prop- like private property owner driven, which is, you know, typical of of development applications like we're seeing tonight. Um, the other one is really town driven unless there's, you know, there's not a, unless, I think it's just Zach and I'm sure he could probably drum up a couple of other supporting the Hamlet neighborhood, you know, property owners, but what I'm getting is one is a, you know, so which can have some, you know, potential political ramifications or, you know, just, I think it's a little bit of a more of a lift on the town's end to uh, to, you know, rezone a, a, an area versus a private property owner saying, hey, I'm approaching you and I want to apply for rezoning. And there is a process to do that.
Right.
There's an application, there's a fee, there's just like, there's a hearing like this. Um, so I think there's, there's pros and cons to each. It's just the, it's
I think it would be interesting because like, it's been, I don't know how many years since we were looking at the rezoning of in general across the whole town to see how many existing properties have some form of commer- commercial use. I mean, I know that there's only like three or four that have required the corner property, but like how many are commercial use along that corridor already that are outside of the Hamlet and are in the Hamlet neighborhood? As like, like how, like if they got bought up by somebody else and then they want to be a restaurant, then suddenly unless you're saying, oh, well, there was already a kind of an exception of commercial use on that property, like they're also gonna be in conflict even though it's already a commercial property.
And Zach could take it on to rezone his parcel and we could still do the larger rezoning eventually, right? If we want, or the town could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, is the, do you know is the, the guy, the gentleman who is partially preparing um, his food that he does at Farmer's Market? Do you remember that we were, who else was on the board when that happened?
Well, yeah, that was over on Lan- Lan- Landon Road.
Yeah, now, but he's just doing like food prep.
Right.
There and then takes it down to Farmer's Market.
That's right.
Um, but I think that that's still, they're still down there. I'm assuming they're still doing that because he didn't have another place. He was originally at a place downtown. Um, that expanded.
And he wanted, so did we, we make that into a PDZ? So he could do.
I'd have to look back through how we did it.
No.
But we, we did approve it.
Yeah.
Because he had a commercial kitchen and everything there.
Yeah, Joel, did you wanna comment?
Yeah, um, they, on the, on the question of the enabling businesses along not just on the corners in the Hamlet neighborhood zone, you know, the town board talked about this, uh, whether to enable it all over the place. And there was pretty much a consensus that it would be, that we would be, we would support rezoning, uh, well, changing the zoning so that it would be enabled along the major corridors. Ninety six B and thirty four ninety six over here in West Danby. Um, and in fact, um, Greg was told, go ahead and work it up. So, you know, we're, the board is poised when, when Greg brings it back to the board to make that change. Um, I'm a little surprised they didn't mention that, but um, but we're, we're on, we're on board with it.
Yeah, well, I think in that time, um, in, in that time, what happened was that Leslie came up to me, it was either the last planning board meeting or the one before and said, hey, Zach's property used to be commercial.
Well, this is true.
And it just brought this other question of, well, what if Zach just applies for a rezoning? And I think there's very, it's, it really doesn't look like spot zoning. I mean, if somebody, let's just say way down ninety six B said, oh, and you know, rezone commercial, that might be, you have to look at the comprehensive plan and, you know, see if it was actually supported in that. Um, I think there's very good uh, evidence and support for Zach to approach the town to do a just a single one-off rezoning of his property. Um, the question is just now, you know, I, I think they're, it's just a matter of, you know, does Zach want to do that? Um, or wait for uh, the slow wheels of government to turn and that we, you know, have, I mean, because I think amending the whole uh, zoning district here and in the Hamlet should take some public hearing or two and get, you know, we talked about maybe doing a mailer to, you know, neighbor, uh, property owners in the Hamlets, just getting some consensus, maybe doing research on why, why was why were these uses restricted to corner lots? And so I haven't done that research and if I reach out to the former planner and see was there some reason behind that was because I would hate to, you know, I think there's a little bit of, you know, me coming in here for not even a year and uh, it just started to change things around that um, have been established and there's a lot of community buy-in in the beginning, so.
Well, I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of community buy-in on that, on that. It wasn't, it was not a lot of discussion about that. Um, it's something David put in, um, embodying sort of uh, urban planning principles. Um, and I don't think there's a lot of local commitment to, to restricting the businesses to the corner lots. And there was agreement that we would be willing to rezone to enable it enabled businesses in the Hamlet neighborhood zones where all along the, you know, the major corridors. It's not that big of, it's a zoning change either way. Um, the same requirements of public hearing. Um, not that much different in terms of text change. Um, I don't, I don't really see where, where there's a whole lot faster process for rezoning a single property. Now, and it, and it's true. I mean, it was, it was a, it went through a couple of iterations as a, as a commercial property and was zoned that way. Back in the day when we had the only businesses that were accommodated were by implant development zones practically, other than the little black boxes on the map where businesses had been at one point. But, so anyway, I, I, I think, I think we have a board, a board, uh, I mean, hesitant to call it a mandate, but I think it's pretty close to, to go ahead and entertain the, the rezoning of the Hamlet neighborhood zone along the, along the major highways to accommodate businesses, not just on the corners.
Well, it sounds like we're in favor and Zach just seems to decide if he wants to wait for that to happen or proceed with trying to do just that property.
I guess all of what I have is if I go through change it to commercial zone and everything works out, um, yours Donald, what cannot change it to that?
Everything's possible.
Okay.
It would be.
But it's just not guaranteed. Um, but yes, yeah, I, I just think that the, the main thing here is just either private property approached the town says, I want to rezone my property and that's just their, their process and we deal with the surrounding neighbors and just adjacent impacts versus changing the use of many people's properties could just generate discussion and, and conversation and um, you know, just uh, more people coming out and, you know, just might be, there might be, you might have to handle it a little bit just differently, so.
Yeah, probably the best thing is to just have him approach as an individual and you can always do the, you know, take the time to do the to do the broader consideration. The two don't conflict in any way.
They don't, no, and so just, yeah. At least we hear some support for making it easier for businesses to operate with that message.
All right, any other privilege of the floor conversations? Okay, approval of the minutes from April.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
First.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Nucci.
Has.
Ma.
Yes.
All right, Leslie is not here. Joel, are you giving us the town board liaison report?
Uh, I, I could have if I had any idea that I was gonna do it, but I'm, I'm hard pressed to just do it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't know if Catherine is.
Greg could probably do as well.
No, not on the town board.
All right, well, we'll assume everything is happy and going well with the town board. All right, development reviews. First up, eighteen East Miller Road. Um, remind me where we left with it. Did we determine lead agency? We did, right?
Right, so, yeah, so last time the action was taken was um, just determining lead agency. So the only changes to the plat and I can pull them up here on my screen. Um, since last time where that it now shows the
New Wells.
Yep, the, the new wells.
Um. I guess it's the existing well, the new well.
Well, there's a proposed one too.
Well, I'll say.
And, and the proposed driveway, but you haven't seen it, they're, they're uh, all going in right now and I was up there yesterday um, talking to Joel about planting new trees out there, um, which is required just for the building permit aspect, so the, yes, the lot lines haven't changed since the last review, or maybe they, maybe they jugged a little bit, but uh, they're each still one acre, uh, the same health department approval still applies. So what the, the requests of the planning board tonight are to determine environmental significance. We, I did draft the resolution for that. You don't necessarily need to read. Um, if someone makes a motion to, okay, not to read all the wherethes, but maybe what, what you're resolving.
Okay.
Uh, and then open all the hearing and then taking out, and then any questions?
Are there any new questions? No, okay. Two wells, just like your, your wells get reviewed by anybody?
Not us, no.
Yeah, okay, I was curious, I was just thinking it was. I don't know.
Is it the health department that reviews the, the well location?
That will have to be approved by the engineer if we had.
Oh, this epic in the wall. All right, so um, see no questions on the revised plat, which also nicely has a place for me sign. Um, determining environmental significance. Do we have to do any checklist?
Oh, right, yeah, I just got that up here. Um, so I, stop showing. I mean, what I put down, so the only other question on the short environmental assessment form last time was, if you recall, there was uh, one of the checkboxes was coming up of there's, there's a water body. I ended up adding the DEC, it was really my error because it captures water bodies and adjacent properties as well. And there's a nine acre property, uh, just to the west of, of Joel, that in the very north corner, there's a little water body up there, the subdivision will, will affect that. So you just have to say, yes, there is a water body. Um, and no, there's no impacts to it.
Okay, okay. Um, if you want, I'll just read down for you real quick and unless anyone has considers it large or moderate, we'll assume we're saying on the no. So will a proposed action create a material conflict with the, with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land? No or small. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a CEA, which we don't have any? So no, will a proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing traffic for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy that fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Or small. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Um, no or, no, it's small, public or private waste, waste water treatment utilities? No or small. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Small. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small. Um, so if we want to take an action, the drafted resolution is that the town of Danby planning board, based on careful consideration of the application materials, determines the proposed minor subdivision will result in no significant impact on the environment and that a declar- negative declaration for the purposes of Article eight of the Environmental Conservation Law, be filed in accordance with provisions of Part six seventeen of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So if anyone would like to make a motion, you know, that determination.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All right. Berman?
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Nucci.
Yes.
Ma.
Yes.
Okay. Now I will open the public hearing on the final plat if anyone has any comments for record. If you can, while we get in the room. Okay, being none, I will close the public hearing.
That was big controversy.
It was.
All right.
All right. Do, okay, so um, is there anything on this list of resolutions of wherethes that I should bring to mention? Um.
Here's to the reason.
Two properties that will each be more than just over an acre. Um, doesn't have a minimum lot size. It was already approved by the county whole health department for wastewater requirements. Um, and that they issued confirmation that it will, it meets the requirements for the new lot. Um, I think the rest of this is more or less just our laws. Um, attention to the road. We did the environmental review. Um, everything was published to the neighbors. We just held the public hearing. We declared lead agency and found negative declaration. Therefore, let it be resolved that the town of Danby planning board does hereby grant final subdivision approval to the proposed minor subdivision of the town of Danby Tax Parcel Number seven point dash one dash nineteen point three. By Joe Lamson owner, subject to filing account Tompkins County Clerk within sixty-two days. Do we have any other? I don't think, did we, I think we talked about, um, planting against the other property last time. I don't know if we want to add that as any formal contingency. That's all I'm recalling from a previous review of the properties. I mean, the rest of it had to do with where the well and the property lie and the driveway were.
Did you say that was hurting that thing, Greg?
Yeah, so with the building permit, um, Joel is adding in six, six new trees um, in the front yard. Um, and then he's actually clearing out some, some dead ash, which is, which is good because there's ashes. They're dead and they're probably a safety hazard, so. Um, no, he's not required to do any other landscaping beyond that. It's the front yard trees. Um, and he's replacing trees too. He took down a larger tree, uh, larger pine tree and is replacing with, with two smaller trees. So six in total. But no, that's not, um, you know, it's usually for a small subdivision like this, there's probably not reasons to really condition it, but that's, that's the board's decision. Um, he's, you can drive, drive by it tonight and see that, that the house is being built right now. Um, the new driveways are in. Um, and yeah, so a lot of, a lot of sort of review is going into the, the building permit, the zoning portion of it. Uh, stormwater management, so there's so there's a portion of the site that drains off and, you know, make sure to have some silvertintes there too, so.
Okay. Okay. Someone wants to make a motion on the resolution that was read?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Health second.
Hi. Thank you. Berman?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Driver?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
And Ma.
Yes.
A lot wider than.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll hand this to you now and then, uh, so you'll take the sound of the county clerk and we'll record it. You know, the subdivision will be, you gotta do this in sixty-two days.
Okay. I need to stay together.
Right, yeah.
So they only need one?
Okay.
No one's seen. All right. Next on the agenda, the four zero five Troy Road parcel.
Shit, cool.
Um, of a minor subdivision. Um, we need to declare lead agency and review the plat and discuss what's. Discuss what. I don't know, can we discuss what's going on with the easement, design decision?
Yeah, so alright, well, it looks like the applicant did not show up. You know, I sent him an email today and said, please show up. So that's unfortunate.
Four thirty there.
I know, I did say E S T, my my communications, so it's very clear. Now, I know in with variance applications, applicants are required to be there. So it's, I I think it's gonna be up to you all, if, I mean, you all could. Review it. I'm happy to answer as many questions as possible. Uh I was getting some of you that the background on this before. Would you like me to sort of?
Is this the brother or sister?
Yeah. Well, that is, that was a, that was near there and that was. So. Alright, well. I'll just, I'll just pull this up and then I can at least just talk about it. There's there's no action that that was requested and except for declaring lead agency. You all know it's just.
Do that and then have conversation with them next time.
Right, or or you can just punt it all to just next time. It's it's completely up to you because the applicant should be here to just answer questions.
It doesn't hold up anything if we do lead agency and the review in the same meeting next time, right?
No. So would it would it help if I pull up a map of this property?
Yeah, let's just look at it.
So here we are. This is a s- almost seventy acre parcel. It's in the rural one zone district. This is the very northern part of Dambi. So this road over here is Troy Road coming up. And then down here in the south is Nelson Road. There's one house here. It's on the, it takes access from Troy Road. And this was their mother's house, Adam and Carrie Cartman, their mother. Someone told me that, I forgot her name, but she uh she lived there for a while and and so has bequeathed this property to to her. Son and daughter. So they're, they now want to figure out what to do with it and. And then so the very northern part is the town of Ithaca here that has the Eldridge Preserve, Nature Nature Preserve. So Adam approached me a few months ago or months ago at this point and and sort of immediately talked about. Reserving this in honor of their mother. Um and essentially bringing more of the nature preserve south into Dambi. Um there are, it's hard to see from this map, but there are some streams that come off the hill down into the nature preserve. So and then. So so there's some nice kind of back areas, it looks like, even though there's those. Easements running through it. So there, they 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 want to sell this property to someone and they thought, well, maybe just doing a subdivision. A smaller subdivision to make it a little bit more marketable. Let's parcel off a ten acre property on Nelson Road. And I think ideally they want just one person to buy it and. He had approached the nature conservancy about putting it in easement, but they quoted him about twenty five thousand dollars to do that. So he pulled back from. Doing it, initially doing a conservation easement, which is why the short environmental assessment form says. No conservation easement proposed. And I'm I'm going over this background because there was a little bit of back and forth. But then I talked to him in a follow up conversation and informed about Dambi's conservation easement program, which doesn't charge twenty five thousand dollars and. So him and his sister are back on the. Being interested in a conservation easement while also retaining some development rights. So what Adam wanted me to communicate in his last email to me was. So there's this proposed smaller ten acre lot down here that would have one home. And then there's an existing home here, but he wants to be able to retain to have at least one more home somewhere else on the Troy roadside. So whether that's done through subdivision, so into three lots, or it's done through clustering development rights, which is a very rare. It's a rare process, but it's where somebody with a large piece of land. And if there's a ten acre density, they can cluster those developments into a cer- a smaller area on the lot. Um and then reserve the rest of the lot. So it's. Kind of like what he's discussing here. I I think. A lot of this is really on his end to figure out what he must do and I've. I I was hesitant actually to bring this to the board and I seeing that he's not even here, but I, because there there's still some. Questions and things that he's trying to figure out just with his sister about what they want to do with this property. So. You know, maybe we can just kind of leave it at that and not take up, you know, unless there's questions with that, not take up too much of your time, but just that I I think we will be seeing him again. And he is going to be working with the C A C, the Conservation Advisory Council, on going through the process of an easement. Obviously, that's entirely up to him and his sister. He could just. You know, get halfway through the process and just, you know, say no thanks anymore. Joel did have a large, kind of long conversation with him, so.
If you allow me to, if you allow me to come in, I'll 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 augment what what Greg just said. I had had a nice long conversation with him. Um in which he was very supportive of 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 doing a conservation easement on the entire property. Um with 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 some, as as Greg mentioned, reserved right, yet to be worked out. Um but we um got the green light essentially to proceed. At the last A C meeting, we created a a a working group to 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 negotiate with him. You know, what would work best for this whole property. I described to him the various zones that are possible within our conservation easement. And he said, already I can imagine, I already know what I would put in what zone. So we, you know, he's, he was very. Pleased to see what he could do within the context of a town of Dambi conservation easement. And I anticipate that that. So so the next step is we'll we'll do a a site visit. He said, go ahead and just let me know ahead of time so I can, I can notify the tenants or she knows what's going on with people traipsing around on the property. And and we'll and we go from there. That's usually the first step is to do a site visit and then. We'll make the same evaluation of, you know, where where we think it would make sense to have in what zone. Um see if we're on the same page and and take it from there.
It sounds like there's not enough concrete information to really do anything today, so I say we punt it till next month.
Yeah, it's great.
Too many unknowns at the moment. Yeah, yeah.
I will say though, I felt it like a a little bit of a win on my part because he initially was gonna say, oh, no, I just wanted some divided. And and he said, I I'm gonna sell it to a to a green minded buyer who just will never subdivide it and develop it. And I said, ooh, I heard that. But so if you really care about deserving of property and allowing some, you know, housing to happen. Uh you should, you should go through conservation easement and.
How many, how many acres was it?
It's almost, it's sixty eight point eight, yes.
And could he ever get annexed by the by the. By the. Count the zones extent there.
The town of Ithaca.
You could be putting more, couldn't they?
No, we want to keep mine.
No, we want to keep.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, not that it would still be in Dambi, but it would be part of the.
It'd be part of the Dambi easement now.
Right, right. It would just be, I think, maybe not formally, but just. Feel wise, it would still be a preserve, it would be a larger preserve, yeah.
Yeah.
And he wants to name it after his mom, so it wouldn't be the Eldridge Preserve, it would be the, like, Elma?
What a preserve is different from a conservation.
Oh, right, right, yeah, that's true.
But they'd still be physically.
Well, if it's a preserve, then. I mean, he could have a conservation easement and not allow trespass.
Alright.
That's possible, then people, you know, just.
Can you?
I didn't know. I thought, well, what the heck, they're right there, maybe.
Yeah, but that's, but they charge twenty five thousand dollars.
No, that's, that's something, that's the nature conservancy, which is kind of fun. We'll give you this land, okay, but you're gonna have to pay us twenty five thousand. This. Are they the name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they are nature conserv- all those guys, oh, okay.
So, so yeah.
I stand corrected, yeah.
Alright. Any other planner reports?
I'll keep it just really brief, just just for formality sake. Uh something exciting, so the, we're, I'm actually leading the effort to plan a planning conference here in Ithaca. It's a little bit outside of my role with Dambi, but. I I'm a sub- tier section director for the American Planning Association. And so it's our turn to host the conference, so Ithaca, we're gonna have it October ninth through eleventh. I probably have money in my budget to send a few of you all there or even just certain sessions during during the day. Uh food and all that and libations. Um so I I'll give you more more information as we go along, but that'd be a great training opportunity. Hint is, you all need four hours of training. I will dive you all. Um too, so I wanted to put that out there. Uh speaking of training, communicating to you all about the training. The town is going through a a email shuffle right now and it's and it's a little bit painful and there's a, it's, there's a lot of people that haven't been able to access their email. I've probably talked to four or five of you all in the B Z A and in the planning board who haven't been able to access. If you can't access your town email, call the town clerk, Mariah Dillon. Uh or call Cindy, just call the main line. She has all your passwords because we're transitioning to Microsoft Outlook eventually. We also might, the town is considering. Uh changing the email policy so that not everyone has to have a town email. It can just be personal email. Um and then maybe the chair would have the town email, but there's, there's. Yeah, it it is a lot to have, I think fifty four emails is what the town has, which, you know, would be a lot. So the the town is, the board's figuring out. If 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 they can or if they should, you know, change it to do that. Um but if you can't access your email, bottom line is, call the town clerk and she'll get you back an email. Because that's where I'll send you all training opportunities. There's lots of recorded videos. Those are easy. Spend an hour at night, just read the video or watch the video, shoot an email, say, and shoot Cindy an email saying, I watched the video. It's an honor, it's just, you know, it's important.
We don't have to print out the little certificate a little to you?
Same thing, certificates always, is that a thing?
Whenever somebody has reported training to me, they have.
I'm gonna require it, I mean. Well, I'll think about that, but I think if you just let us know that you you did the training. I'll just keep some things, like, so. At at the May sixth town board meeting, they uh approved the, the just small zoning amendments that allows signs now in the Hamlet neighborhood. So I think I said that I would send you all the language to that and I will, I will do that. But it's a pretty small zoning amendment, it just allows businesses to have some small signs in the Hamlet neighborhood. And the only other thing I'll just pitch to all is that the Dambi market is going to be, Dambi Food and Drink is gonna be opening. In a few weeks, there was an email blast today. He didn't give us the actual date. It'll be a soft opening. Um with retail and and hot food will come later and everything, but just wanted to update on that since you proved that site pencil recently. And I'll kind of keep it at that unless there's other, there's lots of other things going on, but.
So in terms of that planning, it's two da- it's the ninth, tenth and eleventh, it's three days?
Three days.
So is it something where Dambi could like take X slots and then we could all, we could kind of figure out who can go which times and hours?
That maybe, usually when when you register, it's like by name, or maybe we could register as Dambi Planning Board member. We might have. We'll see. I'd have to, it it comes out of my my, one of my budget lines. And so we'd see how much it'd have at that point in the year to register. I think we have registration by September. So there's seven of you. Registrations are shooting for like two, something, the under three hundred for the whole conference. Days will be broken out though into smaller amounts, so what I've, but but I can, we can think about that or I might just. Gather interest, who's interested in, you know, are you interested in one of these days? There'll be sessions, you can see which sessions. That the theme is planning for protobia, designing with empathy. Very, very ifcian, right?
Yeah.
So in contrast to dystopia or utopia, this is protobia, this is very optimistic that. It's not the highest level, you know, to get there. It's just incremental change, incremental, you know, moving along, plotting along towards towards a greater future. Um in designing with empathy. I I consider a little, I have a little. But so I'll probably feel the interest, see who's interested and then sort of whittle it down from there. Somebody wants a full conference, then we, you know, you have to draw straws or how we'll do it and it depends on how much I have left.
Lot of days too, yeah. Yeah. So just so so you don't, or we don't feel bad about what happens with the planning board. I I just, this morning I did three and a half hours of training. Now I work three hours a week. They they forgot to send out messages that we had to do, so a whole bunch of them have. You know, have expired and stuff, but oh my gosh. Unbelievable in terms of just, you're talking about people coming up with. This being with empathy or whatever, the different kind of. Things that I think have changed from our trainings from a year or two ago. With language and what kind of stuff, yeah, it's like unreal.
And that wasn't for the planning.
No, no, that's for my. My hourly work for Racker. And they have, and because they run houses. A lot of it was also, you know, all of the procedures for. Lot in, all of that kind of stuff. It was over three hours. So doing um four hours for for the planning board is really a treat.
You need to do it a lot once a day.
Well, I, yeah, but mine had all expired because they forgot to send out the emails to let us know that they were due, so. I was I I out of compliance.
Alright. I think we are adjourned. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Greg, I have to conclude that that. Microsystem we had before was actually muddying the sound. Oh, I thought I heard it. Did I not close it up? Could hear everybody tonight, and I never could without.